Busy evening, but I guess we're having two work sessions. Let's jump right into it. Dan, public relations report.
Thank you, Mayor. We haven't had media report for over a month, so there'll be a few of these. Bear with me and we'll get to it as fast as we can. Thank you.
Firefighters want to obtain a copy of video that two news uncovered of crews battling recent apartment fire. Unified Fire wants to use this video to train their crews. The video shows the moments before, during, and after the fire in Cottonwood Heights apartments last week. People are seen from the third level balcony just as firefighters arrive with a ladder.
It helps us to understand fire behavior better, and in these apartment complexes, these multiple dwellings built from lightweight construction, the fire behavior is explosive.
A UFA says this video would be for training by the end of the month in the future to teach new recruits.
The mother of Lauren McClellan.
Mike, so that's Assistant Chief Higgs. He's the Assistant Chief over operations. And so what we'll do with the video is we'll use it to, in recruit camps and club courses when we're teaching fire behavior, to talk about building construction materials, lightweight structures like this burn out mass, take the longest, right? But a lot of things in today's materials like things, right? So the other thing we see is a lot of products are more petroleum. Your television cabinet is plastic, right? The framework. These used to be in the stuffing and couches and things like that. So this will be really useful for us to use for training.
I apologize, I'm not sure I have fire there just in the complex.
Unrelated.
Unrelated.
Different occupancy, different apartment.
A family is out of their home this afternoon after a chimney fire in Cottonwood Heights. Crews were called to 7800 South, 3100 East at about 1:30 this morning. The damage was terrible. Nobody was hurt. Now has to find somewhere else to stay until everything else is fixed. Firefighters say this serves as a reminder for all homeowners.
There's one house in the house where they definitely pose a risk. Make sure you're taking care of it. You know the condition of the building and you do everything safely.
Fire crews had to cut a hole in the roof to make sure they got to all the hot spots around the chimney area. A building inspector will check to see whether the house is safe to be.
So no injuries there. That was a Creosote fire. I've submitted articles before talking about Creosote. And so one of the things that's tough with a chimney fire is quite often the folks in the home. It's not burning inside of a room in your home. And usually what tips them off, if neighbors or house or body doesn't report it, usually it tips them off with just a very weird.
Red Cross is once again helping people from Cottonwood Heights apartment complex on fire for the second time in two weeks.
Yeah, the latest fire got the Santa Fe apartment not able to return back to their homes. Investigators say another apartment fire, similar nature here two weeks ago. No reason to think they're related in any way right now, though. Investigators say this all started with a grease fire in a kitchen. The Red Cross thankfully, nobody was hurt.
The other fire was not a cooking fire, but a follow-up for you. I have asked our Fire Marshal's office to go visit with them there. One of the things we struggle with in an apartment complex is code requires fire extinguishers to be in the hallways. What ends up happening is people steal them and they use them, they discharge them, things like that, right? So needs to be some kind of an expectation that is realistic. I mean, the manager isn't just going to repurchase these things every time, right? But we do need some kind of cycle to make sure they are replacing those. And then even more importantly, and I submitted an article. Extinguishers in their homes, especially in the kitchens, kitchen areas and towards eat, rest areas. We don't want fireworks to get to one, right? But this is really tough for apartment complex owners keeping those fire extinguishers in the hallways.
Little older apartments too, right?
Thank you.
I know our plow phase up for.
But no snow on the ground yet. Chin may have noticed some snow plows out ahead of the storm.
You can't go faster. You can't plow faster. We gotta.
With your family for the holiday.
Eight guys at work. They're my family.
Good report, yeah. I did my ride along with him last.
And congrats to Danny and Matt and even Eric who, last minute, they. 4:30, so they hurried and came out and did it. And I thought, look, it looked pretty good. So thanks for that.
Solve difficult issues to benefit those who suffer while simultaneously protecting our children.
Regardless of what was going to wind up in the final bill, Utah's law enforcement agencies have been.
Two specialists, Andrew Adams tonight. Andrew.
David, police believe drugs are hidden inside a car. Oftentimes, they're turning to the canines to sniff it out or help develop problem cause for a search. Well, those noses may be in need of a tune-up. It's neither cheap nor easy.
Life is a drug dog.
This is Zoe.
Is supposed to be simple.
We call it passive intimidation.
Sniff that familiar scent and stop.
She stops, walks up the stairs and.
Canines are trained to give a heads up to their handlers when they smell a variety of illegal drugs.
Marijuana, meth, cocaine, heroin.
Which is now why life is about to get a lot more complicated for police departments.
Because the dogs don't differentiate to us what they're finding, if it's marijuana or cocaine.
Cottonwood Heights Police Office says that may prove to be a challenge with legalized medical marijuana.
Well, because the dogs are used to.
Deeming probable cause to search a car for.
Yes, it could. If the dogs are trained on marijuana, they do have a marijuana card, a medical card. Requires some protocols set in place.
Etchell says most police departments in the state now face the possibility of having to replace their drug dogs with ones that don't indicate on marijuana.
It would be difficult to retrain them. The dogs that are currently working may have to be retired.
With each trained dog costing into the tens of thousands of dollars, it's potentially an expensive future. Cottonwood Heights Police is already.
Laws will become in effect, we do not train dogs on marijuana.
For canine Zoe and her handler, life may hold some dog days ahead.
Under score is in the legal community, they say, yeah, short-term, new protocols, longer-term, don't be surprised to see a new wave of canines that do not sniff for marijuana.
Thank you. Andrew Adams live for us tonight. Thank you, Andrew.
Robbie comments?
Changing much right now, but Zoe, for instance, has another year or so left. So as we replace the dogs, we'll just train them to sniff for drugs other than marijuana. And the way they go about teaching, indicate when they smell, you know, it's a game because they're looking for a toy. They hide the drugs within the toy, and so when they find it, they indicate, we just won't train them with marijuana.
Okay.
But I mean, many of those times you. In there which. We can search the car anyway. So it'll be a little bit of a challenge, but nothing we aren't going to overcome.
Okay.
Our dogs are about to retire anyway.
Police in Cottonwood Heights are now working to return a pile of property to rightful owners. Yesterday, David Tousick and Brody Winkler, in connection to a string of break-ins early yesterday morning, according to a probable cause statement, they've broken into vehicles from West Valley to Cottonwood Heights. After arresting them, officers found other stolen items in their vehicle. And certainly, new videos serve as another reminder why you must all.
And then that went out of several stations, and I guess we had some goods, other goods, right? Is that what they said?
Yeah, we had a suspicious vehicle call neighborhood and tis away, got there very quickly and found them and chased. We got them stopped and. We were able to contact several people who didn't even know they were burglars yet and returned their purses and golf clubs and various items to them before they even woke up and knew they'd been victimized. So good for the guys for paying attention, good for the neighbors for paying attention, calmed them, good for the response times. And the same thing happened this morning on Camino Way. Had a call and this kid was on a bike going through cars and stealing stuff and tried to outrun the car, but then jumped over some fences in the neighborhood. We caught him and got him under arrest. Middle of the day.
I saw how chased. They went down the street.
Yeah, we put out a few glitter bombs, I think.
Some people living in the Cottonwood Heights apartment complex are looking to help recover some stolen items from their storage units. Three rented into it the Royal Farms Apartments over Thanksgiving weekend. And the renters didn't find out until Monday. They tell us the items the burglars.
My stuff is fine.
And it is upsetting to these people. Police say the doors to the storage space have signs of a forced entry. If you have any information about who might be involved in this break-in, call Cottonwood Heights Police.
Nothing else, yeah.
The Royal Farms, the storage units are really hidden. It's hard, you never know anyone's back there.
They don't look really, I mean, it looks like plywood.
The church.
Police in Cottonwood Heights are asking for help to identify two women accused of check forgery. Take a close look here. Police say these women passed a stolen forged check for $500 back in November 21st. If you know who they are, call police.
Well, Senator Orrin Hatch.
There you go.
I think they've already made arrests on them.
They don't even accept the checks anymore. And we're ending with a positive story. A business here in Cottonwood Heights, a member of our Cottonwood Heights Business Association. They're doing a really great thing, so.
There. Troops overseas this holiday season will be receiving support from home and a little extra caffeine as well. A local coffee shop called Alpha Coffee, which is veteran-owned, is doing their part to give back and support our troops. Foxer Team's DJ Jolt Bullerjack reports.
That's 1,000 bags of coffee beans just in the last month. Every time I.
Sorry about that. Why would we do that?
Avoided, I drank terrible coffee and a lot of it. So change that.
Carl Churchill has quite the resume. He's a 21-year veteran, sock combat, and now he helps run this coffee shop, Alpha Coffee.
Well, Alpha really has to do with the best, the top dog. We believe in the warrior ethos, that serving other people, giving back.
Carl teaches that mindset to his crew.
It's about teamwork. It's about achieving the goal, the mission as a team.
Their mission, to serve strong, tasty coffee. But more importantly.
Every order online, we ship the equivalent of a cup of coffee to deployed troops.
To make an impact thousands of miles away.
We've sent over 15,000 bags of coffee so far.
You can see, those troops have shown their appreciation. And for customers like David Braun to walk by and see this, it's an added bonus, and it encourages him to buy a cup of joe.
I have a son-in-law who's deployed, and it's so nice when they can get something from back home.
In a way, doing all this keeps Carl fighting from the home front. He wants to create a place that civilians and vets can come together and just relax.
We always say politics divide and coffee brings people together. So good things happen over coffee. That's what we're all about.
From Cottonwood Heights, DJ Bullerjack, Foxer Team News, Utah.
That's pretty awesome. And they've been great. They've been business partners, were partners with us on our Butler Day's program and things like that. And they're members of the Business Association. They've been, they've done a lot of nice things like that before. So, and they've been on board with CHBA since it started, so.
Yeah, and he's not just a visitor, he's also a resident.
Yeah, it's awesome. Great story. So those are all the media reports. Everything else I've worked through with Tim in terms of the newsletter and the website, and that's all we have.
Okay, newsletter, as far as timeline?
The newsletter, we'll get approved tonight or first thing in the morning. Back to Tim and it should be ready to go for the January newsletter.
Bye scouts. Thank you. Okay, any questions, Dan, as far as the report or the newsletter? Very none. Let's look at the agenda. We take a look at the business meeting agenda this evening. It's a lot of pages in. We have, of course, citizen comments, and importantly tonight, we'll be taking public comments on the Walsh property. We've all been involved and heard a lot about that. So we've taken public comment on that. We have two, actually one standing up to your port. Scott, I guess you're doing that, or Dave doing it?
Yeah, and we'll also have Larson, our auditors there, and they'll take up a significant portion of that time.
That's right, okay, super. Some action items coming out of the CDA meeting. First one is approving the Second Amendment project area plan for the campus center. We'll brief on that. It'll talk about it again in the work session with the CDA meeting. So we have some questions we can talk about at the end. Ordinance 312, scheduled for our meetings coming up for next year. Resolution 73, regarding a local with the housing authorities, you know, they presented to us, this is an authority to conduct business in our city. Any questions with that? Resolution 20 dash 74, plans for the Arts Council, is that still on?
Yes.
Yeah, so we're gonna request that you, or post.
We're holding on the Arts Council?
In this, in this story too.
Holding on to our.
We have some other names that have come that we're gonna present to you next month.
Yes, thank you.
Kind of hold on both the Arts Council and Stories Committee. Then on Resolution 20 dash 76, do they keep the same numbers though?
They'll keep the same numbers. I'd ask you to just continue them.
Okay, I'll just continue there, okay. Then on Resolution 76, we have a grant from Utah CCJJ. That's for training, right Robbie?
Right, it's divided up into three areas. They were very generous and they gave us money to send people to de-escalation, train the trainers. So we'll send staff to that and get them certified, and they'll come back and train remainder of the police department. And then we'll send a support services member to redaction training. It's an update on the body camera process and grammar requests and how to redact those properly. And then some additional training needs.
How much is the grant for?
Was it six rounds, seven rounds?
Yeah. About six rounds.
All right, that's a lot of training. Okay, then on 4.7, Resolution 20 dash 77, it's the rank first voting we talked about. It's a pass resolution to support that. 77 county coming on board.
And if I may add, Shane had made some changes. We want to make sure if there is any reason we want to pull out of this, that we have that option. And we've included that wording in, I think by May. And so in case something comes up that we're not aware of at this time, we'll have that option.
The statute that creates this pilot program doesn't specifically allow the withdrawal, but the Lieutenant Governor's Office is assured that that, they will allow the withdrawal. So that's what we've done.
Okay, great. Any business meeting agenda? Okay, I think we'll have probably a few citizens here on the Walsh property, public comments as well as any small events. Okay, moving back to the work session agenda, if I can keep things straight. Item three, the city council and staff reports. Hopefully everyone received Tim's communication. He had seven items that he articulated and then handed out as well, or shed was a copy of results of our retreat. Hopefully we'll have a chance to do a little bit of that. And a couple other documents.
There will be some minor modifications, just some of the wording that I'll get back out to you probably this Friday. It was just some clarification, nothing substantial, so.
So if anybody sees something that, you know, I glanced at it quickly, but appreciate the summary and including the SWOT analysis and see what some of these talked about, so. Any other, before we go into sustainability discussion, any other staff reports or council reports we need to share?
I would just tell you, I know that we emailed the police report to you, but what's not on there is Friday, we are hosting a celebration of life for the South Salt Lake officer at Crown at 33rd and State, and we're buying all the police department members dinner. Might have some giveaways and things. We're doing that from 6 to 9 Friday.
So you're hosting for South Salt Lake?
I'm hosting.
Thank you. And also, you know, UFA, we had our meeting this morning, and I think it was much longer meeting than normal because a lot of proactive action were taken. One, we took a look at the legislative priorities. I thought it was interesting, because we've all heard about the concerns over URS and Tier Q, and so that both would affect fire and police. So UFA is active behind that. It's important to report also that UFA has 27 new hires coming on here in the next.
Correct.
For a while, which is critical because of the staffing shortages. So that's positive. And went through a formal process today with the full board of evaluating our chief and legal counsel, and that was done. And we're gonna report back to you that from all the bayers and the party of UFSA and UFA, it was a very positive report. But at the same time, as positive as it was, there were some opportunities that were shared as constructive ideas. So it was a good meeting this morning. Mike, anything else you want to add this morning?
Not to the meeting itself, but I just wanted to thank you for the great showing at the EMS tabletop and review. So Scott was there, Mayor was there, City Manager was there. So thank you very much for participating in that. It's a big change for us and we appreciate you kind of hitting on it.
I think the greatest part of UFA is all of the efficiency studies that are going on and reviews through all their operations. So we did all that originally last week. Anything else? If not, the next item on our agenda, and we have about 20 minutes, is proposed sustainability resolution. Timmy, want to lead us in?
Yeah, I think you know the background of this. This was first discussed in June. It came again back to you in the October 23rd meeting. At that meeting, there was some discussion points and a request for me to look at additional wording, which I did and included that in a resolution that was put together. There it is right there. I'm including that wording because the last time we met as a council was to provide some modifications, and this is the wording that we came up with. Since that time, there's been input via email from Councilperson Bracken, Councilperson Bruce, I think Councilperson Shelton also had comments at one time. I'm not including all of that. You've all seen probably all of that information. This is based on what we had discussed at the last formal meeting, but there is a lot of different input related to that. So this is the opportunity to discuss a little bit more. Just based on the meeting on October 23rd to this copy, some of the things that we included in there was some specific timeframes, included city operations to 2022 and within the city by 2032, and that as sustainable or renewable energy and sets goals for that. But it also included wording that the goals must not compromise affordability, reliability, and environmental stewardship. That was a big change based on input that I received at that time. We also benchmarked off of other communities, looked at Fort Collins and others. So this is, this is the information based on our last formal discussion, but I know there's additional input. And I'm not discrediting any of that input from any of you. It's just, this is where we were at based on the last formal input, so.
Mike, Scott, do you want to go through, you had, I think, four recommendations to tweak this a little bit and how you probably have some.
I'm trying to find, email.
Here's your email.
Yeah.
If you want to use it.
Yeah, and that's why I sent out twice red lines, and it didn't get a lot of responses. So I figured you all, I just included in the body of the email. And I figured Shane would eventually probably words, but the first one was just to acknowledge things that the city has done and would continue to, has done in the past on sustainability with the street lighting, this building, various things like that. There was a few minor words and some tense changes throughout the document to just kind of show that it wasn't just a complete whole sale. You know, but we had, we'd done a lot of things. It also included, initially, I had understood from the title that it was actually going to go a long way beyond just energy. It was actually going to be emissions and other things. And so I included quite a bit on traffic comments, CMAC projects that we've done, but turned those down so that it was more in line with what the resolution actually says. I did include a comment from the CMAC, just, you know, I think that does match. I guess we could take that out, but I thought that was air quality and reduction and fossil fuel consumption, I thought was part of the sustainability. The other one.
CMAC is the traffic control efficiency.
Congestion mitigation and air quality objects. So that's the adaptive traffic. There's a couple of other ones we've done, just kind of keep people moving through the city rather than idling. The idling ordinance would fall into there as well. But I didn't, I don't believe I called any specific, there's not any specific ones. The only other one was I changed the shall to may on the work with other partners. And I'd also considered there may be other people that are interested. It may not just be our neighboring cities. There may be an agency, direct center of school district. So I broadened that just a little bit. And then the last one, which, you know, which is certainly debatable, I changed the date for city compliance to 2025 rather than 2022. And then reiterated my concerns with public works yard being there, that that was really aggressive. I'd rather set a goal that's attainable, but I also.
Help me understand what's happening. What am I missing? What's happening in 2025 with public works?
I bet that was just a couple of extra years to possibly get public works on to 100% sustainable power as well, because I don't see.
But what do we have there now, I guess?
It's the traders and the trucks and the.
So you're envisioning like there might be something built there?
At least give us time to discuss and figure it out, yeah. Ultimately, yes. If you're asking me, I would love to see something built there that was, would conform to the concept, like this building. I think this building's probably pretty easy to get there. But that's also part of city operation. So that was, when we're already discussing the 2019 budget.
But just let's go back to, can we scroll to the second page on that?
Just scroll to the second page.
Okay, but we still have the language that says, without compromising the three principles of affordability, reliability. of affordability, reliability, environmental stewardship. We still have that language. And I'm just looking here. We have the idle free ordinance, which generally means that a municipal act is adopted that has the force and effect of a law, the violation of which may be enforced. The resolution is a formal expression of the opinion or will of an official body, municipal body adopted by a vote. So I think it's important that, before we even get to the language, that we remember an ordinance is something that we expect to enforce. A resolution is an opinion that we hope, you know, it's a goal, it's something that we hope to get to. I think that's an important distinction, because this is, we're not asking that this become an ordinance.
No, and I understand at the same time, and I understand I was maybe in the minority there, and if the majority was to go back to 2022, I mean, I'm okay with that. It's not any less important. Just in my opinion, that seemed like that was a little more reasonably attainable. But I can understand that I may not prevail on that argument.
I do really like giving kudos to the city for major events that are, majors that have already been placed, that are striving for the efficiency and some great accomplishments we can certainly do with that. That was good.
Do you think we have any strong feelings about including the traffic efficiencies or not?
I like it.
Yep, I like it. I like both of those, yeah.
And then I thought that the provision for other partners would just make sense.
I like that too. So I think the question is, has come down to, Scott, also when I read your email, you also stated that even though you added two years to the 25, you made it clear, and I think Tally's, I mean Christine's comment also supports that, that if, if the process, which is a plan and action schedule shows it could get quicker, you still support it quicker. You just want to.
Yeah, why wouldn't you?
Yeah, yeah. You just want, you just want the goal to be up to longer to not be, as you said, not to sound fake.
Well, I mean, initially, you know, taking other considerations, I took the one for citywide, kind of, I took that a little bit of a mandate, and so I actually removed it, but I also got the impression that that was not what the majority of the council felt.
I removed it as well, so I was with you on that point.
I suspect you may be in the minority, so.
I suspect that might be case, but I want you to know you're not alone.
Yeah, but I think, and I made the suggestion, I think it was me that made the suggestion that to add the without compromising the three principles. I think that's an important aspect.
Yeah, that's critical for me to be supportive, because those principles have to be there, because it still has to be financially viable and feasible based upon a thorough process of analysis and understanding of fiscal note and all those things, so.
I know there's still a lot of details to be ironed out with regards to a sustainability manager and sustainability committee, but as we're setting a goal, I would love to include brief language that addresses both of those goals, even if it's projected out of the, no great to be included in this resolution.
Say that again.
The sustainability manager position and the sustainability committee's goal to get those in place.
My concern with that is through our goal setting, that I think we would, I get a sense that the council is ready to commit to a sustainability manager, but this says that we look through the process here, if the process tells us to do that, we're going to do it. But, you know, see how the rest of council feels on that one.
But that third point was that they may work with other partners, neighboring cities, and that was part of that discussion, and that is still in there. Certainly, if they're not working, I, you know, I think that would.
And I think we've assigned Tim to work with, at least with Millcrick and Halliday, to come up with the recommendation, how they'd like to proceed. I think this current language, to me, still allows us open for that without tying our hands to it.
Yeah, because this, this one right here, if you look at the, on that page, the fourth further resolve, it talks about working collaboratively with neighboring cities to explore these resources. If you add additional language on additional partners, that can occur as well.
Yeah. So I have a question, or two things real quickly, is that I support that language from my perspective, just adding, you know, not just with other foot lanes, but also with other partners, and is that open to anybody and any group or individual that you feel is collaborative, wants to work with us on that?
I guess I sort of echo Tally's sentiment about a committee. I know it didn't make our cut last week, but I can share with you, these are the, we all received most of these emails, but I noticed that some of the ones that Tim got were not ones that I, I've received. 21 letters from constituents, from a 16-year-old to a pediatrician to an active-duty service member, and I suspect you all have too.
Yep.
Since I've only been here for a year, you guys may have seen other topics that have resulted in great numbers of letters, but in my small time here, this is probably, has seen the most interest, that I have seen the most interest in constituents. And when I see a community that's active and interested in something, I always like to see how we can harness that. You'll see in my newsletter next month, I talk about how our citizens can get involved, the multitude of committees that, committees that we have, and I think that if our citizens are looking forward to this, that we should offer them that opportunity in terms of a committee, and maybe the committee is what helps us get to the, an employee that we share among communities. So I, I'm interested in maybe.
And I'm not opposed, I'm not opposed to the committee or that, if a process tells us that that's what we want to do.
I love the process word.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so you want to jump and not have a process?
Well, I think our process has not always been a process, so.
Some of these emails, these citizens are brilliant people, capable, talented, dedicated to the city, so if we capitalize on the momentum that is right here in front of us, there's a lot.
I'm not disagreeing with that at all, but we assigned our city manager to, after our, we paid $500 for the recommendation of how to hire a manager, then we assigned our, to a sustainability manager, then we assigned our city manager to meet with those cities. I understand that's, I guess, still in process. All I'm saying is if, still in process, we should, we're still meeting, or still following through, if out of that, there is a consensus of a need for a committee, the back group, that may be a committee of multiple cities. I'm also not opposed if we feel after that, whatever we call process, after those meetings, that we feel that a committee is, if I'm considering, I don't know, I think this still leaves it open enough for us to be flexible, is a committee, is a hiring person, is a.
Well, I think the committee would, and sorry, Tally, you may hate me for saying this, but I think the committee staves off hiring somebody for a period of time, and may take some of the workload off of our staff to figure out what are the great ideas out there, what are the opportunities. These, this is just a small snippet, I suspect we might hear from others that aren't part of this, this grouping here tonight, but I, I just, we have an arts council, we have a historical committee, we have sometimes trouble finding people that even want to be on those committees, and here we have an area where our committee, our community is committed to this, and we're not, we're just saying, well, we're going to go through a process, a process of which I'm not very clear about, where we, if we have people that are interested, let's get them together, let's, let's get them moving, let's get their energy, let's get their help, and, and perhaps, like I said, maybe we'll, they'll make some recommendations that we can do with our current staff, and we don't need to hire somebody. So that's, that's all I'm saying, and I, and I'm not sure what you mean by process, so maybe I'm just.
I, me, the process is first you have a resolution, and here you determine a date, then you're going to have goals to that, and in that, and then we ask our city manager to work and help us with us set some goals, and if, and if in setting those goals, we're saying, well, the first thing we want, a goal is to set, is to have a committee. Me, that's part of your goals, that's part of the process. But that's just me.
So from my perspective, the, and maybe this is a selfish perspective, if the council wants us to move forward with the committee, that's, if you give that directive, we'll do it. There's a lot of things right now that are kind of big issues that we're moving towards, and I'm totally not opposed to a committee, I think that, that's important. I would love to work through some of these other issues first before we get another committee moving forward on this, and now the momentum, that doesn't address the momentum question.
Right, but I, I mean, this is, sort of goes along with our conversation on Monday I was talking about, we all sit on various committees across the valley. I sit on the Jordan River Commission. Is that the best use of my time? I would say I would much prefer to chair this committee than to spend my time on the Jordan River Commission. And so I, I hope that is part of this process, we can evaluate that.
Yeah, and again, I'm not opposed to having a committee, it just seems like that's, that's another step.
See, I guess from what Tim was saying, I mean, I would be supportive of possibly whether we go through and formulate our budget for next year, but we put a line on it in there for a committee. I think that's probably a really good idea, there's a lot of other cities that have them.
Sandy was, Tim and I met with Sandy on, and that's exactly what they're doing, and I like.
They're restricted just to energy, though, in a lot of cases.
Well, he's got two things on it. I'd like to understand from those who go to the cities too, what, probably what structure, I mean, what is it? Just the same as me, that's, that's talk about, that's work on. I think they can be part of this goal, as we start progressing. Yeah, semantics, maybe, yeah. But I'm supportive, I'm supportive of the resolution, I'm supportive of setting dates, I'm supportive of Scott's additions, I'm not opposed to the committee, I just think to call it out, I think it's premature, and I'd like to get the resolution passed. If you want to hold off the resolution and talk about a committee for a while and see how that works, how it's structured, how many, if I got the ordinance to create it, all those things.
I'd rather get the resolution passed and also put a, put a tag out there of what, how we want a, a committee possible.
Let's talk about.
For part of next year, with July 1 being kind of what the last, and all of that, if we can get some sort of a concept of what we want. Like I said, this, this one, when I was originally thinking this, I thought it was much, much broader. This one's focused pretty much on electricity and energy, a sustainability committee, we may want to expand, but the scope, I don't know if that's something we would have to discuss, not a paper session, I'm sure, and some research.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to the steps, I guess.
And I would, if we get those, those put in there, that I think, it would be, what's January 8th, is that what you mean?
Correct.
We did, that it got postponed from the last meeting, but personally, I, I would much, if we can get this, I feel a lot, a lot better. I'd hate to, I'd rather do it right rather than have to push together something that just wasn't quite, I was, I feel, with those couple of changes, I feel a lot better, but I, you know, you know, and I can, I can second the three years without, I mean, I can get it.
So what about the dates? We've got two different proposed long dates.
I think Councilmember Bracken said he could be convinced of the dates, and I'm, I like the dates.
Which ones?
Twenty, thirty-three.
Twenty-five, or twenty-twenty, oh, twenty, no, Scott's.
Yeah, we got Scott's at 25, and then we have the other one at 22.
So if you leave that as, that would be 2022, and I don't remember, the other one was 35 for citywide?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two, yeah.
Twenty-two and thirty-two, 10 years spread? I didn't put that in my comments. And I forgot to mention, I couldn't encourage, I think that, from, that's, that's on you, Mike, in your department, to help encourage businesses, even homeowners, as they come in, on ways that they can increase energy efficiency in their, in their, through the building department. I don't think, that's something you don't have to really wait two or three years.
I appreciate you, I appreciate you always bringing up energy efficiency. Important, like.
Okay, so I, I guess I'm not, on, on the 32, I guess, was consensus, on the 25, I'm sensing that a little over two years is.
I thought it was, that, you're saying 22.
We all agree 22 was okay.
No, he said, he's saying 25.
He said it could be persuaded.
I'll go with the 22 if that's the majority from the jury, I don't think he's swing vote, he just has to, you know, this is.
Well, I think, I just keep going back to the last three words, and if we do have a public works building and it is not affordable, then we revisit the resolution and we change the date to what is reasonable. I don't, is it hard to change a resolution?
No, like you're saying, as long as we're understanding that language and what that language means, if this is something, as more information comes, that changes it.
I don't even know, you'd have to change it if you came up with a plan that says, well, the public works are going to be fixed by 2026, I don't think you need to change this, you've shown good effort.
The only question is, we don't want to say, we don't want to mistake something to the public, you know, is 2023 reasonable? And if it's really unreasonable, it's just a feel-good thing, we want to add a year on to this something, but I, I'm good with them, good with what.
I think it's reasonable if we don't have a public works building.
I would make it with credits.
Is 2022 reasonable?
For building.
For the car?
For this building, I think it absolutely is, I think we should.
Okay, Mr. Shelton, you're quiet, you may have 60 seconds.
I counted three really well, so that's all we need to say.
Should we leave it at 2022 and 32, is what I'm hearing? Can I sum up what?
Yeah.
We'll work, we'll work to modify the document, get that out with you. It'll include information on your first three bullet points, because I heard that that, that people wanted information on that. We'll keep the dates, and we'll get this out to you, we'll make these modifications to get it out. Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
And you're okay?
Three weeks.
And we're going on a big vacation. We're going to, we're going to have this on the agenda on the 8th. I hope we can get there.
It's not going to be hard for us to make the wording.
Well, I just need to get out to everybody and respond.
How big is the check? I mean, I want Shane to know.
Hey, Tom, Rock Mountain Power.
I'm wondering if I could just have a, does that only.
Personal privacy, she's going to say goodbye.
Yeah. I just let the mayor know, Tim knows. I have enjoyed being regional business manager for Rock Mountain Power, working with Cottonwood Heights for many, many years, and I'm going to be leaving in mid-January. I keep telling people that they're calling it retirement at Rock Mountain Power because I'm all disturbed, but I'm actually going to the University of Utah to work as major gifts officer for KUVR radio. And I hope all of you are KUVR members, not just listeners, but members, but I want to introduce Travis Jones. Travis has been with the company for about 17 years, and he has background in vegetation management and operations, and he will do a phenomenal job, and I just wanted to let you all know how much I have enjoyed working in Cottonwood Heights. I, I worked with Mayor Palomar when the, when the city first incorporated to get the first franchise agreement in place, worked for Shane. We've since renewed that last year, and it's just, it's just been a pleasure to work with you. You have a, you have a great city, you have a great team. Tim and I haven't had a whole lot of time together, just a couple months, but in the short time that we have worked together, I think you have made a phenomenal choice, and I think you can have great confidence in, in the service that he'll, he'll give to you and to the residents of Cottonwood Heights. So thank you for letting me serve you for so long, and happy holidays to everybody.
Best wishes to you and your endeavors.
Thank you. It's going to be fun.
That'll be kind of a change, and Travis, welcome. We hope to look at you closely, especially as we talk about this subject and sustainability, and starting with this building and city goals. If you have experience of other cities who've created committees, we'd like to know how they're structured and how they've worked, have they been successful, have they been valuable, and stuff like that, so we appreciate that feedback. Okay? All right, good luck with this. Travis, thank you. All right, we need to move quickly. All right, we need to move quickly to our next meeting.
Drop some of these cards on the table, and I'll, I'll be in next to you. I'll send my own contact information. Do that in the group.
All right, just a quick FYI, you've got some calendar items on your work session. Take a look at those.
Got them all here. Now, now, there's two of them, so.
As a gesture, a adjourn from the, uh, city work session.
So that's the public hearing one, you want the other one?
Do a adjourn from the work session, and convene a C D R A board session. Did you get that?
Incoming.
And all, yes.
That's the south side of the table, it's two of them on here.
Hey, thank you. Give me just a second so I can start the other one.
Who's ready on this? Do you need to make a spot for him?
I didn't know we had to have a motion to adjourn.
Or look up.
And our next meeting, you probably have to trouble when you're in.
This is forward that, that, that Chance wrote down, remember?
Did you handle it? Probably not. But I got you next.
We're ready, okay. My call to order, the City of Commodores Community Development Renewal Agency Meeting, this Tuesday, December twelfth.
Eighteen.
Yeah, we got a long day on the agenda.
Yeah, I did.
And at six-thirty, we have just a few minutes to review some items before we have our work session on the same agency. So welcome. First item for discussion is reviewing the proposed Second Amendment to the project area plan, and the proposed amended project area budget for the Canyon Center. So Jason, you ready to do that?
Yeah, I don't know, Tim won't, it's maybe introduced.
So let me introduce, and then we'll have Jason and Shane talk a little bit more about all this.
Let me just preface this by, this is a lot of stuff we've been through before. Tonight's really the formality. Make sure everything is clear, crystal clear, and all the tears are shot, all the eyes are dotted. And let me start off too by express appreciation of Shane, because this has taken a long, long time because of his desires to protect the city and make sure that it was very thorough. So with that being said, continue with this.
Can you just present what I was gonna present? Anyway.
Why don't you adjourn?
We just want to make sure that we go through this information. We talked about it at our last meeting, but Councilmember Michael was not here at the last meeting. So we want to make sure that you understand what you're looking at. We are gonna have a public hearing in our next, in our C D R A meeting, the business meeting. That's an important part of this. We've had a thirty-day notice on that, and so we're gonna just kind of walk through what we're addressing here with this, and I'll turn it over to Jason and Shane to do that, so.
We've got four items of legislation that will be before the C D R A Board this evening. The first is Resolution twenty-eighteen-oh-eight, and as, I can back up and say, as Tim mentioned, the first thing that will happen in the meeting is a, is a public hearing. In order to amend a C D R A plan, you, one of the requirements is to first hold a, first hold a public hearing. As Tim mentioned, that was preceded by a thirty-days mail notice to property owners and, and to various other entities, and, and published notice as well. The, the four items of legislation that will be before the C D R A Board this evening, the first is Resolution twenty-eighteen-oh-eight, and this will approve the amendments to the, to the project area plan and the project area budget for the, for the Canyon Center. These were, the plan was last amended in, I think, late twenty-eleven, and so since probably twenty-fifteen or so, we've been working on amending it and trying to come up with, with some changes that make sense in light of what has happened, what happened to the world during the recession and to this, to this project as well. And so Jason's going to go into that and explain what the differences are between the last approved version of the plan and the last approved budget for, for the project, for the project area. And then the second item of legislation for the Board tonight is Resolution twenty-eighteen-dash-oh-nine. And one of the things that has, that has come out of this amended plan and budget is having to get consent from the various taxing entities to change the trigger date for the flow of the tax increment and to change the valuation of the project. And we had quite a discussion about, I think, in particular, the valuation issue a few, a few weeks ago. But in the Board's April tenth, twenty-eighteen meeting, the Board approved the form of this amendment agreement with the taxing entities. And so based on that, we spent, we've spent the time since then going out to the various taxing entities and getting their governing bodies to formally agree to those amendment documents, which are fairly short documents when you get right down to it.
What was, what was that date you said?
I think it was April tenth. It might be my recollection, this year, yeah.
The form, and since then, you've gone out, gone in the other?
Uh-huh, gone out to five or six taxing entities, and all of their boards have, have approved this. It's, it's taken a little time, as you can imagine, dealing with all of those entities, but at this point, all have signed the, the amendments to their inter locals that were originally entered into in twenty-eleven. And so it's now back before the, the Board to give basically ratification of what has happened. As I mentioned, the Board approved going forward on that basis back on April tenth. The, the third item of legislation is Resolution twenty-eighteen-ten, and this resolution will approve Amendment Number One to the inter-local agreement with Salt Lake County, where the county will be, will be conveying over to the agency the seven-point-seven-five million dollars in funding, which will then be used by the agency to loan to the developer as, on a construction loan basis, to put up the parking structure and some related improvements that ultimately will house the, the public parking, that is the public benefit that we're, we're seeking, one of the public benefits that we're seeking in this, in this deal. Again, this, this is a, a change that was directed by the agency board. There were meetings before April tenth with, with Mayor McAdams, where he indicated that, that the county may be willing to increase its funding commitment from the six million dollars, which was previously approved by both the county and the agency board, and increase that to seven-point-seven-five million. What that does is it will free up the one-point-seven-five million that the agency had considered investing in this project. These are the old R D A funds that were transferred from Salt Lake County to the Cottonwood Heights Agency that were surplus funds that had arisen from a couple of old Salt Lake County redevelopment projects located in what eventually became the city in January of, of two thousand and five. And so those funds were transferred over. Now, if this is approved, why, those, that one-point-seven-five billion will be able to be retained by the agency and repurposed for whatever purpose the Board deems appropriate in the future.
The county's approved?
Then the county has approved this agreement, that, that was approved over a month ago. They have gone through the protest period, and so, so that's ready to be approved. And then the last item of legislation is Resolution twenty-eighteen-dash-eleven. And this, again, reapproves, ratifies the form of the development agreement, which is the master agreement in this, in this transaction, and all of its related documents that are mentioned in, in the development agreement. Those, those documents that were in existence in, in April were all approved at that time, and so this is a reapproval. The things that, the portion of the, of the total document suite, suite of documents that wasn't approved specifically in April are the construction loan documents and the intercreditor documents. And the, but they were, all of those documents were described in fairly great detail in the development agreement, and so it was just a matter of, of basically taking those, those concepts and those provisions from the development agreement, and then, and then creating standalone documents around them. The construction loan documents include a very comprehensive construction loan agreement, a promissory note for seven-point-seven-five million, which will evidence that the debt and obligation to repay from the, from the developer to the, to the agency, a trustee to secure the, the promissory note, an environmental indemnity, which is a, a kind of a customary loan document on, on real estate loans that institutional lenders require. It's, it's an indemnification back from the, from the developer to the lender, that if there turns out to be environmental problems with the property, it will be the, the developer's problem rather than the lender's problem. And then an assignment of the construction contract between the, the developer and its constructor, and its general contractor, and an assignment of the architectural contract, again, between the, the architectural contract is between the developer and its architect. The reason we are taking assignments of those is that if the loan goes in the default and the agency has to foreclose on the property and become the owner of it so that it can be completed, we want to have the right to use the plans, the right to use the same contractor without having to go out to bid, again, without having to pay someone a lot of money to come up with the architectural. And so that's what these two, last two documents are. They're collateral assignments of those contracts, which will only come to the agency if the agency forecloses under the trustee and becomes the owner of the underlying property. The trustee, the, the agency is taking on the property as a second position trustee. There's an acquisition loan of about four and a half million in place that already encovers the property. And so because the agency will be coming in with a seven-point-seven-five million dollar second that's behind this, about four and a half million dollar first, we needed to work out an arrangement with the senior lender. And the arrangement that's, that's worked out is that, number one, neither party will, if their loan's going to default, they will allow their loans to continue to be funded so that the parking structure can be built with the, with the loan proceeds. And so that's basically what the intercreditor agreement says. It, its intent is to get the structure built, or at least allow the agency to loan out its seven-point-seven-five million in the construction process, because that's an important concept, because once the agency loans its seven-point-seven-five million, then a couple of things happen. And they are covered by the escrow agreement, that is also between the senior lender, a title company, Cottonwood Title, and the agency. The senior lender is putting into escrow, when the construction loan closes, a subordination agreement, where it subordinates, makes junior in priority its first priority trustee to the public's, public parking easement that will be created under, under that agreement. So once the agency loans the seven-point-seven-five million, whether or not the, the project is, is completed, the public parking easement agreement will go into first position as to the parking structure so that we can have that parking, parking right. Another thing that's going into escrow from the senior lender is a partial reconveyance. And that, this relates to the trustee, a reconveyance of a trustee is essentially a release of the lien of the trustee. A partial reconveyance means that the trustee is only being released partially, and in this case, it's going to be released against Lot One of the project, which is the park lot, which is the other public benefit that the agency is buying, this one acre open space in, in the project, which the agency is, is going to be acquiring that, again, because of the release of the, because of the release of the partial reconveyance from escrow, will come free and clear of the senior lien. And so we should be getting both of the assets that we desire, the public parking rights, and fee title to Lot One, the park lot of the project, will be coming free and clear of, of liens, and, which is what, what we want. So those are, those are the new documents that you didn't see in April. Again, they were discussed in the development agreement, but weren't drafted at that point. They have all, all of the documents, the development agreement, the amendment to the master declaration, the public parking easement agreement, condominium declaration, master parking agreement, office parking agreement, Lot One easement agreement, which is a little agreement where surface parking on Lot One can be used for the benefit of the, of the project. The loan agreement, promissory note, trustee, and environmental indemnity, assignment of construction contract, of architectural contract, the escrow agreement, subordination agreement, partial reconveyance, and intercreditor agreement have all been negotiated very heavily and have been approved by the developer's team. The developer's team includes proposed buyers of both the hotel and the office unit. They have approved these documents, we have approved these documents, the title company has approved the document that, that it's going to be party to. So all of those documents have, have been approved. And when I say we, I, I have approved the form of these things, and so now it comes down to just getting a reapproval by, by this body of, of those documents. And again, this, to me, would be basically a ratification of what already occurred on April tenth. So those are the four items of, of legislation that will be before the Board this evening, and I would be happy to entertain questions, if there are questions concerning the differences between the second amended project area plan and the current version, or the amended project area budget and the current budget. I would, I'll defer to Jason on that.
Three-point-two, does the city approve? You said they have approved. The other entities, has the city done that as well?
The city approved, the city approved that in, in, on April tenth.
So that was, okay, so three-two, everybody has approved it. And that was all based on Resolution, or Resolution twenty-eighteen-oh-eight's plan that we also discussed in April. Ten basically allows the county to give us one-point-seven-five million dollars more.
By so doing, freeing up.
And then.
Our one-point-seven-five million.
Okay.
Yeah. So in other words, what, what we're trying to do here is to put before you, make clear to you any changes that have occurred since April, even though in those approving resolutions, the Board gave authorization to make changes to the documents that were approved. We're wanting to put it all out on the table again, and we're, we're wanting ratifications of the, of the interlocal agreements with the other taxing entities, which again, were approved and, and have been, were approved in April and have been approved subsequently by all of the, all of the other taxing entities, and, as well as Salt Lake County.
So on the project area plan and the proposed amendment to the project area budget, and Jason, we'll take a minute, you know, following in there to brief the audience on those two items.
Want you to add what you see more of what we heard a few weeks ago?
Yeah, so the context of what you see up here on the screen is a presentation, a quick presentation that I intended to use. I can quickly kind of flip through it for the benefit of the agency board. But was gonna review that for the benefit of the public hearing. Thought we would do that in, before we started the public hearing, but we provide a little bit of a background of why the, why the Canyon Center C D A was originally created, give some background on the economics, the parking structure component, and, you know, roughly where people, so they can understand where it was located, about eleven acres or so. 11 acres or so. We did think it was important, and I would be happy to go through this, of the difference between the 2011 plan and budget and the 2018 amended plan and budget. It's actually the second amended plan and the amended budget 2018. And the primary components that we did talk about last time, I think a few weeks ago, base year was one of the considerations that has been amended in the proposed plan. The original one, or 2011, was 2010 base year, which was 4.7 million dollars, and a trigger year of 2015, which had already triggered. The proposed amendments resets that to a base year of 2016 at 3.8 million dollars. And now the amended plan, second amended plan, contemplates that the tax increment could be triggered anytime between now, basically once it's adopted now and no later than tax year 2021.
That's just a formal action by this Board?
Yes. The CDA or the CRA would-
Like a 90-day heads up? We have to do, or you can do it in December?
Yeah, we'll have to do it in advance of, for the benefit of the county. We'll have to do that. Probably we, we do it most likely in coordination with our November 1st report. When we file that, we'll let them know of our intent to trigger it so that they would collect the-
That's typically when you always do that, in November 1st report.
But right now, we, the budget, the amended budget contemplates that it would be tax year 2021. So we would go all the way to the end of the period that is authorized here. But it could be done sooner just by, by action of this Board.
While the construction and everything went super quick and it was all done and ready to go before-
Yeah, if it got on the tax roll sooner rather than later, then we would propose triggering it sooner. But if it doesn't, all of the taxing entities have essentially said, well, we're, we're not going to have it open-ended. We want to know that construction's moving forward, that as an incentive, I guess, to make sure that it is done, wouldn't be able to trigger it after 2021. So it would have to be triggered even if we weren't fully vertical. We did review the site plan variations last time. You'll recall that there wasn't any residential in the previous contemplated plan, and that's the original. Remember, this has gone through variations over the course of that six or seven-year period. But, you know, now we've got multifamily housing units as well as some single-family development units that are in there. Got a good hotel mix though, and office, and then some retail, as you can tell, about the same in terms of restaurant and retail. Here's another comparison of where the 2011 plan and budget focused relative to participation percentages and timeframes. Salt Lake County and the library collectively, Salt Lake County originally was at 100% for 18 years. Based on the proposed amended plan, second amended plan, and in order to fully, hopefully reimburse themselves for the 7.75 million dollar loan, wanted to extend that period out. So they have extended that out an additional five years to 23.
That was because of the 1.75 issue?
Yes, yeah. It, it was that, that, that particular feature. And they had a desire, obviously, to show that all of that could be reimbursed at a tax increment. Well, the only way to accomplish that is they had to go out the five years to show enough tax increment. So you do 18 years to 100% 23 years. The Cottonwood Heights is still proposed to be the same. It hasn't changed. It's still the 75% for 25 years. It just, again, resets the, the trigger date and the base year change. Central Utah is the same. Canyon School District, sorry, I didn't mean to skip over that, but I did. That's a big change. They were at 100% for 20 years. Now the 100%, and there's a footnote at the bottom, is they remit 100% or it's collected and remitted to the Agency, and then 30%, we actually remit that back to the school district. What did change is the 100% to 23 years. So one of the things that they struggled with, I think we talked about this last time, was the single-family component. And they requested and negotiated that no tax increment come off single-family homes. So in order to get the same dollar amount to meet the financial objectives of the plan, they extended three years in order to get the same dollar amount. So there it goes from 100% 20 years, which is really a 70/30 because-
It's actually a little lower than that because of the single-family carve-out.
In the second.
Right, in the second component, yes. Yeah. So it's 70% of, it's, it's 100% of everything but the single-family. We remit 30% back to them. So it's still 70%, but they have to go 23 years in order to get that-
We still collect on the single-family and we would-
You still collect on the single-family for all the other taxing entities. The school district-
And they're excluded, so that one goes directly to the district?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. So it isn't calculated as tax increment.
Maybe this, maybe I'm asking the same question differently. Where's the 10% for housing coming from?
So when we originally did this project, and it still constituted under the original plan, is it was a CDA and it did not require housing participation. So new projects after May of 2016 require a 10% housing set aside. But because this was done in 2011, there was not a housing component of that. So that has been a major change since then.
So housing, what I'm assuming to be either affordable or something along-
It's defined as moderate, moderate income housing, but it's-
For future projects, we would need to make sure we're-
Yes, if a, if a new-
Only if they include a housing component, period?
Nope. Any CRA that's created now, so any project area that's created, there's a distinction. Any project that's created under a BLIT designation, it's actually 20% that has to be dedicated. But any other project not consisting of BLIT is 10%. So this was done prior to that, so we don't have that requirement. But that's a good question. Certainly could come up.
Jason, and again, I, with 30% being remitted back to the district, why is that created? Is that because it gives them freedom of use of that money or that's kind of why?
Yeah. It was a, it was a flexibility to them. I think you all know better than I do, but there's a good relationship, very good relationship with the school district and Cottonwood Heights City. This isn't unique. They've done this on other, you know, Sandy has a few projects, Midville has a few projects with them. But it is, as the mayor indicated, it's flexibility. So instead of going through basically the certified tax rate minutia that's required, this is calculated outside of that, and then the 30% is remitted back to them. And so there is really maximum flexibility with those dollars to them. And so that 30% that comes back to them is a lot better than the 30% if it just flowed directly to them. And that, that was a huge benefit to them. I mean, huge in terms of-
I was going to tell you, one of it, seems reasonable.
Yeah, yeah. Central Utah and Parks and Rec District, again, same percentage and timeframe, just changed the base year and the trigger date. I know the mayor was in, in attendance at the Park and Rec District. They were, again, very complimentary of the city. Obviously, there's a good relationship there. But they were very supportive, and so that's what changed there.
Hey, Jason?
Yeah.
I've had a, I've had a question to me that the application may be expired at some point, and that the 2011 application date wasn't valid. How would you address those concerns?
In terms of the, okay, so the, when we were talking about an application, I'm not sure. What the, what the statute required is that the plan that was originally formed, which was in 2011, we, we did the same process. We went through a public hearing process, the plan, the budget was adopted. And so all of that was legally formed. So the Canyon Center CDA was in, was in place. So really, no formal application. I look at it and say, the creation mechanism was really the plan and the budget. We also entered into interlocal agreements constituted by those 100% 18 years and various percentages and timeframes. So we had a valid CDA created and we had a valid interlocal agreement in place. And so the statute says that if that's formed and it's, and it's existing and it's good, you can go back and amend those plans. In fact, often you might have some experience, we have a lot of these, that over time, because of the change in development or the timing or things like that, go through an amendment process. So under the statute, we're, we're allowed to go back and amend certain provisions under the original creation. And it doesn't reset the date, it just constitutes an amendment. And so that's what the 18 second amended plan and the 18 amended budget is simply just amending the 2011. So it doesn't start, you know, it, it doesn't cease to exist, the 11, and then start in 18 like an application maybe. It's just simply amending that and we're authorized to do that under statute.
And the key part is the interlocal agreements, which is part of that as well, that the taxing entities have to apply into those changes.
Right, yeah. And they've, they've adopted all of theirs. They've amended them, they've actually signed them, we've got those. The ratification is really our side of the party to those interlocal agreements. So they've already agreed to them, but they really aren't formally constituted until we ratify those. But, but that's how I would address that question. So I don't know if I did a good job about the application. There's not a-
There's no time limit though in statute? You could just amend, 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 amend?
Yeah, yeah. There, previously, there was some statutory framework that kind of said, once you reach 25 or 32 years, depending on the project area, you really only could create a new project. You couldn't amend it, you'd have to create a new one. But this framework, because it's driven by interlocal agreement, the legislature has simply said, I think, as long as the other taxing entities are willing to amend it, you can amend it and change whatever terms, percentages-
Does this have nothing to do with the actual building applications that were permitting those types of things?
No, that's maybe where I got confused. I wasn't sure if that's what you were referring to or the application.
But this is, this is a different-
Yeah, we, it's not an application. It was, it was created by you, you know, as the Board. So it's a, it's a creation of the Community Development and Renewal Agency, and it exists. And even if it wasn't amended, for some reason it did get amended, it's still valid, still exists, we're still getting tax increments. We just wouldn't get the additional five years nor the benefit of the reduced base year tax.
Does the trigger date impact that at all?
In terms of ultimately the financial picture, yes, definitely. If we didn't get, and that was one of the things that the county was really concerned about when they provided the additional 1.75 million, is they said, well, if the other taxing entities don't approve the interlocal agreement, we're the only one. We're a percentage, but the school district's a big percentage. We're not sure we want to give the 1.75 million. Provision in the interlocal agreement of the county that essentially said, if you can't give the other taxing entities, then you better come back because we may not have a, a deal.
And so far, they have. And so if we prove this-
Everyone's-
It's all there, the counties approved it, the 1.75 was there, they, everything's been-
And we've been a good dialogue with the county. They're aware that we've got everyone and that we're just having to go through this process. We had to do the, the 30-day noticing, we held a public hearing. So they're aware that we're, we're required to go through the steps, but they have been supported because all the other taxing entities came in.
Let's catch up, we have about three minutes before we go in, and we'll kind of go through the-
I think that's really, you know, I, I did, what we talked about last time is we had a higher incremental value in the 11, a little lower now. We had that, you know, the parking structure was valued in the previous model. When we talked to the assessor, it cannot, well, it's a component, but it's not separately assessed, it's part of the other infrastructure. This is just a rundown of what was kind of originally planned versus what is currently That just gives the development assumptions. There's the percentages again. The last part is just the graph that would say, here's the amount of taxes that are base year taxes based on the 3.8 million proportionally how they go through to the taxing entities. That's the annual property taxes, the second column. The third column is what it would be over that 25-year period. So those taxes-
I'm sorry, can you just go back to that?
That's, that's base year.
Are the base year, which is the light blue, sorry.
So, so over the 25 years, we're going, my eyes aren't great, but around $200,000 is the, is what we'll see in dollars?
Yes, the Cottonwood Heights City would, yeah, 198,000, yeah. So that would continue to flow, yeah.
Plus-
Plus.
25%.
Yeah, and this is the, yeah, this would be the, the pass-through. So this would be the 25%, which would be the 658. So it would be the 198 plus the 658.
Over 20 years.
Over 25.
25 years, yeah.
Yeah.
So it's 7,000 plus the 26, so it's-
Yep.
We'll call it 34,000 a year.
Yep, yeah. If you look at it on an annual basis, 7,900 and the 26.
And we're-
Oh, sorry.
And then the remaining amount.
Yeah, and that's the, this is the portion that would be funding the overall plan. So this is what's in the second amended plan, so it constitutes that, yeah.
As we, as we adjourn, Tim, I know you've spent a decade doing this. Any comments, questions?
No, I've been working with Shane, Jason on this. I, I don't have any comments. A lot of work on it. Shane has spent a lot of time working on it, so, yeah.
Motion to adjourn and move into-
President, the CDR, just the city arrangements.
So, may I? I need a little bit of time to set up the stuff here, so you need to, you might need to hold off on jumping right into that.